We'll call the meeting to order here and uh do a roll call right on the deck.
Greg Myrie, Cindy Wright.
Here.
Lynn Feldmeyer.
Yep.
Brad Donald.
Here.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Harry Hapner.
Yep.
Josh Grant.
Here.
Notice, public hearing, please, please take notice that an application has been made by Brad Ollinger, fifteen four ninety-seven crazy corner road, Caladonia, Minnesota, five five nine two one, for an interim use permit for a temporary farm dwelling, section fourteen to fourteen point four interim uses subdivision one subsection, subsection six in Crooked Creek Township on the following premises to it. Back in northern half, the southwest quarter and the northeast quarter, the southwest quarter, and the quarter, quarter, the southwest quarter, section nineteen township one oh two range four, Houston County, Minnesota, parcel ID oh four zero zero seven one zero zero zero. Said applicant standing and making application is as he owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners Room, City of Caladonia, Minnesota, at five thirty PM on Thursday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comment should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, three oh four South Marshall Street, Caladonia, Minnesota, five five nine two one, or emailed to martin dot eric and C O dot Houston dot M N dot U S. Must be received by Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Comments in regard to the petition received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Eric zoning administration.
Okay, Brad, you want to just come forward and just kind of explain what you're doing?
Oh, I guess my neighbor's been helping me for the last fifteen years. The unfit generation farmer been there and my dad and mom and grandparents passed away in their early twenties. So I've been farming. Twenty years now. Just the neighbor comes up and helps and I need him. He's, he's getting, is there, where he lives, there are bulldozers in his house. He rents from Ken Frank and I told him he can come up and live at my house and he already mows my lawn and sprays me and checks out my cows. I just figured I'd give him a spot to live. From where I'm at, the section's only like fifty feet from where I can actually build another spot, but it's agricultural land and where it's at, it's unuseful. It's a parking lot with a red parkade and whatnot, so. I just thought somebody would help me. Nobody's already been helping me out. He can just live there. I got a little bit, I get a little bit of, I put the holding tank, I might just put it on the other side of that fifty feet to a, like I said, do a go actual building.
Any questions you have with it here? Small, I guess that's the explanation we need. So, any comments, anybody sent anything yet? Just one, Brian.
All the neighbor did the sound.
Brian was Jack. Our jury was in favor.
Our chief was notified and we.
I think. I'm former, I love.
And this is a temporary dwelling, that's all.
Temporary dwelling, yeah. Cabin or something. Straight off.
Which will have conditions for once no farming activities occurred. That will be the end. The area certain. And it's on skids or.
It's on skid.
Or something.
Yeah, it's something already. Get revealed.
No permanent anchor in the ground.
And also holding tank.
Holding tank and then just hope to make system well and while it is there.
It's going on, he's a land dwell. That area is prime ag and it's already been consolidated. Other stuff still really is.
It's already, it's already in the. Yeah. Ground area.
Okay, it's a good spot. Yeah, it's pretty possible.
Yeah, we do roll less.
Need more discussion before we go on. Final findings. And this is, and the findings.
Okay. Number one, that the proposed use conforms to the Houston County land use plan. Staff analysis. By limiting this proposal to a temporary dwelling, it will keep this parcel in compliance with the density limitation set forth on the land use plan. In addition, preserving agriculture is the primary goal of the land use plan. This proposal provides needed additional labor for the farm.
All those favoring the staff analysis, number one, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for proposed use. Staff analysis, the applicant identifies that the farm requires additional labor.
All those that agree with the analysis, two, say aye.
Aye.
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county's staff analysis. The new septic system will require an approved design and other existing utilities will be used minimizing construction disturbance.
All those favoring the analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Those.
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis, no impact is anticipated. The slope is under eight percent and the proposed temporary dwelling will not substantially increase the amount of runoff from the site.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, number four, say aye.
Aye.
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Staff analysis, soils are one oh three B and one oh three C two with land capability classifications of two E and three B respectively, making the locations prime agricultural land. The disturbed soils in the area would limit septic designs other than the proposed holding. So, what does that mean? Basically, that trying to put a full drain field in at the top. That's what he's. Because they've been so consolidated from truck traffic and stuff, they're not natural.
All those that agree with the analysis, number five.
Aye.
Six, that pollution hazards have been addressed and next step we have to make. Staff analysis, the largest potential pollution hazard will be a septic system. The applicant will be required to have a certificate of compliance for the S S T S prior to the issuance of a building pit, building permit for the temporary dwelling.
All those that agree with the analysis, number six, say aye.
Aye.
Those.
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, this site will utilize the existing driveway and utilities except for the S S T S. Utilities are present in this location, but if any new requirement arises, it is the responsibility of the app.
All those that agree with the analysis, number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hold?
Number eight, that adequate measures have or been, have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off street parking loading space to serve the proposed use. There is adequate, adequate space within the farmstead to accommodate parking and loading space.
All those that agree with that analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Number nine.
I'll move that we strike number nine, that's not fine. Uh, you know, it's, uh, it's set on that. All.
Nine and fourteen.
Yes, nine and fourteen.
Second.
Uh, nobody seconded, somebody was seconded.
I'll second.
Take order. Uh, all those that agree with that. Motion, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hold?
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, surrounding property is utilized as agricultural. The proposal will not remove tillable acreage from production or impact the ability to utilize that acreage for production nor will it affect neighboring residences as, as this is an existing residential property.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, ten, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hold?
Number eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the surrounding predominant use is agricultural. This proposal will not impact the development of surrounding property, do more than the existing conditions.
All those that agree with that analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hold?
Number twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibrations so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Staff analysis, no nuisances are anticipated. This proposal is for a second dwelling unit. It will not include offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise and vibration.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, number twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hold?
Number thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Staff analysis. This is a, this is a mechanism to allow a greater density than allowed by the zoning district, but only be removed within sixty days for such time that the applicant ceases to occupy the lot.
All those that agree with that analysis, say aye.
Aye.
Can you hold?
Number fifteen, that site specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of public's health, safety, morals and general wealth. Staff analysis, there are no anticipated issues affecting the public's health, safety, morals and general.
All those that agree with the staff analysis, number fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings. Second.
No, second.
Uh, roll call, I guess.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Lynn Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Harry Hapner.
Yes. Yes.
You want to go through the recommended. Conditions?
Permit, number one, the permitting shall comply with all federal, state, state and local laws and regulations. Number two, the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure that the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules and ordinances. Number three, the permit shall be reviewed annually by the zoning administrator. Any substantial changes to the proposal as presented and approved will require an amendment to the permit. Number four, the permit shall expire when no farm labor for parcel oh four zero zero one seven zero 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 resides in the temporary dwelling. Number five, the existing farm dwelling may only be inhabited by inhabited by immediate family members, spouses, children or an employee of a primary dwelling resident who is actively engaged in farming parcel. Oh, four zero zero one seven zero zero zero. Number six, at the time of termination of the permit, the temporary farm dwelling shall be removed from the premises within sixty days when in practice.
Now, should we do a voice board approval of conditions with this one?
I would, I would make a motion that we accept the condition they had presented.
Something.
I'll second it.
All those. Aye. Someone's here to make a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we approve it for taking it to the county board.
I'll second it.
Uh, let's do a roll call now.
Greg Myrie.
Yes.
Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Lynn Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Jim Weezer.
Yes.
Harry Hapner.
Yes.
Josh Grant.
Yes.
So I'm after the family member, so I can move my wife out there and I can stay at the house.
Respond to them.
We're gonna tell her you said that.
No, I don't know.
Part of the minute.
Yeah, you won't be.
Alright, thanks.
Good one. You're doing pretty soon the way it sounds when you get.
No, just, don't know. She doesn't know what, what the, you ladder, you might move back to Vegas. I gotta find some tiny guys.
We didn't, we didn't record that either.
Yeah.
Next one.
Well, before we go on, I got a question. On the first page of that packet, the last paragraph says, the ordinance language for temporary farm dwellings is found in section twenty nine dot two zero subdivision one. The notes, one of the five conditions must be met, the presence has been, been to require all five conditions to be met. Um, it seems to me that, you know, if we're doing this, maybe we should just change the ordinance.
Down the road, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Rather than saying meet one condition, meet all five conditions.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
How we done with it and how we can.
It seems like we're just kind of using one criteria and that's.
That's the basic rule, right? Kind of two things, right? Right? It, it actually does give protection to the farm. So something. Right? Yeah.
Yeah. It just doesn't. I know we got a couple of. Orders. Thank you.
So there's always, yeah. We're a long way doing it.
Yep.
One of the parts I have. Figure out the past, it's a relatively. Good one. Pretty much unanimous, we're all gonna say yes to the finding the fact that we read all the team from each part to say.
Think you want to read them all. That comes down to the, the opportunity for somebody object to it, you know.
But does the county board read all of them?
Yeah.
At the meeting, they go through all the team, no, not us, yeah.
What, John, Mr.?
Yeah, no, we don't do that. So like this is public record, hey? So we all just said, I read and don't ready. I'm gonna, I vote that we respond to the. We've done it in the past. I was just curious.
I, I wonder if we shouldn't kind of all have a chance to, if somebody wants to oppose me.
But then you both know, right? You're just saying, I both know on that.
For the time it takes, it might be good to get it solved out after.
My, I guess my, it's already on record, hey?
It is, it is, but I think it's like nine. But the point five or whatever, you know. There are circumstances where, and I'm all for moving things along.
Yeah.
It truly, it's not, that's not what this is about, it's just giving the public the full opportunity for the full process. The last thing I want to add is something where something comes in and says, you short circuited something and effectively we get to throw something out. That's the part that scares. And that's where I'm coming.
I've been on since twenty fifteen, when the first time we were in practicing and stuff. There were people watching every, every one of these things, they recorded them and they took little bits and pieces on and tried.
Yeah.
Like YouTube stuff. And they get, so I think it's kind of important, I would just kind of go on there and skip.
I was curious.
Well, if you go to some of the seminars they put out, they, uh, had for this stuff. The attorneys are real definite. You go through these, I mean, I'm actually apprehensive when we accept all of the staff analysis. That's kind of like a rubber stamp and they said, you need to really put more thought into it and put it on paper. It made it. If they, if someone would go to court, they would, they would say that you didn't do your due diligence because you just routinely accepted.
Well, they're always gonna say that you didn't do it, but. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So Josh's question too, there is, let's say, all of a sudden we vote this permit down. Well, and all of a sudden he takes us to court and he said, you guys never read the findings number behind you, didn't read findings number ten. We didn't get the Scott set, so then you got another can.
Procedurally, we don't create an opportunity for somebody to deny something or approve something which is not what you're.
And people do have questions.
Yeah.
As, as well they should.
It helps to pinpoint it, it helps me in my mind, it's time consuming, you know, you don't want to have to do that, but if you look at each sentence or each part of that, it kind of helps it, uh, become more clear for me.
I guess I feel pretty comfortable, the analysis is pretty carefully done, it seems to be pretty succinct, you know, so. Kind of get the.
Yeah.
It gives each member, you know, a chance to put, add, add to the staff analysis, you know, it's.
Absolutely, too. Yeah, and I mean, a lot of times with the analysis, right, you know, we try to make it as general as we can. You know, so I mean, it's not, there's not a lot of opportunity for objection, things of that nature, but it's, or it is like trapping. Like, but it, it tries to be really specific to that particular nuance that's being asked, it's not, you know, across the board kind of thing, so it's, it's easier to say, okay, to, or I disagree. It's not, there's not a lot of controversy.
And it's two thousand fourteen. United's permit. Didn't beat up. Permit. We did. Charles. Days later, we issued the permit. Really? First of all. Stand there and. Really?
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
Just from my.
Yeah, I mean, the odds are, there's, there is somebody who's gonna review what you do. Most of the time you may think it doesn't happen, but sometimes it probably does, and the fact that it doesn't, isn't brought up is because you did it right.
That's excellent. Question, do you need to permit to tear a house down and rebuild in the same spot?
For the rebuild, yeah, the tear down, no, some places would have permitted even tear down. And then, but we come back at you and basically say, you gotta take it to a cross town. You'd hear that.
Oh, really?
Unless you can reclaim, you know, if it's dry block that can stay on site. If you could do things with it, there's the ability to filter it down. But the parts that you can't, you know, find a use for, we, we have some pretty, pretty stiff, stiff language that talks about where a waste has to go in this town.
Yeah. And your worst.
Yeah.
Nearly is fine, though, well, we say more bodies, maybe that's something, I don't, don't be afraid, just go, put it in there.
Yeah, right, that's desirable.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I mean, we're watching.
It's weird, or someone's saying, yes, just before you say, yes, or no, or whatever, you just throw in everything and reasonably. Absolutely. We're trying to, trying to do that.
I, I'm more of the ones that are. There's some that, to me, that are definitely something you want to discuss and talk about, other topics that are like, nobody's rejected this.
There's some spot for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a risk.
Take out some of the points that don't.
Yeah. So you understand that we get that.
That helps.
So you, you people would have knowledge here. If someone is tearing a house down, putting up a new house, right?
Yeah.
Well, usually it's complaint driven, somebody's gonna call.
Oh, sorry, I, I thought you meant, are we aware of everybody that's doing that? No. I mean, if they call us, I mean, we know how to put them through this, how to make the permit and sure. I guess I was, there's some understanding questions.
Well, I know somebody that's putting up a new house now, tearing his old house down. And he's a very controversial person.
I think you know who you're talking about.
You know?
Does he, and, yeah, this is, the last name started with a P.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, he does have a permit.
Yeah, that's good.
We were there. Appropriate.
That's what I did. I didn't want to bring his name up because we're getting along.
There's a lot of people, it seems.
Yeah.
You got this first one all the time, so.
I'm glad he's.
We can just have a chair until we get the first part done. Just have a chair right there on the line. So, you want to read the hearing laws?
I didn't want to give you trouble.
Why don't you sit up here? Or would cause it better?
Please take notice that an application has been made by John and Carol Dearson of eighty-two forty-three County Three in Caladonia for a conditional use permit to expand a feedlot from three hundred and sixty-three animal units to four hundred and sixty-one point five animal units consisting of dairy cattle to build a mineral storage structure with over, and to build a mineral storage structure with over twenty thousand gallons capacity. The facility will consist of the following components, an existing fifty by one sixty three stall barn, an existing thirty-two foot by seventy foot partial confinement barn with sixty by one hundred foot open lot, an existing forty-eight by eighty foot total confinement barn, an existing thirty-two by thirty-five foot parlor, an existing one hundred and fifty foot by one hundred and eight foot freestyle barn, an existing eight hundred and six thousand three hundred and forty-three square foot holding area and exist, and existing gas touches, and it proposed one hundred and fifty-four foot by two hundred and sixty-eight foot mineral basin with two point eight nine million gallons, all in Mayville Township on parcel zero nine zero zero nine seven zero zero zero. Said applicant standing and making application are as the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners Room in the City of Caladonia at five fifty PM on Thursday, May twenty fifth of twenty twenty three. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying said application. Comments to be mailed to the Environmental Services Department or emailed to Marty Carrick and must be received by Wednesday, May seventeenth of twenty twenty three. Comments in regard to the petition received by the state will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the Planning Commission prior to the meeting advertised on May fifteenth of twenty twenty three.
I guess most of the information is there, but just wanted to give us a quick overview of what you're up to.
Yeah.
You can still say something.
Okay. Um. For those, I, I guess, you know, my name's John Dearson and I know a few of you on the board, faces are familiar, but I don't put names with them. Just to give you a little background, I've lived in a colony all my life, except for two years in the service. When I got out, started farming with my dad. And every so often you expand. And presently, uh, I have my two sons with me. And, uh, we're milking about a hundred and eighty cows right now. And, uh, this, we built a freestyle barn in two thousand and fourteen and I applied, uh, through equipped, if you're familiar with that program. And, uh, your name's put on there and funds are available and stuff, it's what hasn't gone through until just recently. And, uh, we, uh, haul miner every, every day, two loads every day. And the positives on this pit is, uh, you don't have to start a tractor up in winter time. I don't know if you're familiar with that, I mean, rose miner and things don't want to work too well in the winter time and they want to, more or less a year's storage so you can haul out fall. And the benefit of that is, you know, your nutrients are better used in the fall when you incorporate them. They don't run off and stuff like that in winter. Otherwise, Emily's been helping me with, uh, getting this all put together and everything and, uh, they notified me this spring that there was money available for that program and, uh, the state also has money. Buy that, so. I guess that's about it.
So you're planning on getting approved and build this here as it's.
That's, yeah. We have to get this all taken care of before, uh, the building, uh, I can contact the builders and stuff like that for the plans and, uh, they have to put bids in and everything, so the time is kind of short, you know, that way, I mean, a lot of people might have their summers booked already, you know, as far as getting things done, but, uh, I have contacted a few people that have done this already and sounds like they could do it.
And you've got the plans all in place, it's just a matter of getting approved and kind of.
Yeah, Kate, what's her name?
Big Kim today, the panel.
So I, I just got a, there's a bidding sheet that, you know, even. There's a bidding sheet that, you know, you give it to three, four people and I guess both of them there.
Any other questions? Members here, John?
Are you gonna put computers in?
As far as.
How does milk it?
You're talking about those?
Yeah.
I I I don't. I just turned seventy-one today and my boys. Uh, they're about forty-two, forty-four. Josh, my second son, was his basketball coach for twelve years. I had a lot of fun with that. But anyway. They've talked about it, you know, computers. I mean, that's. Labor is a hard thing.
It is.
Uh, on the farm and stuff like that, as far as getting help and stuff nowadays. You know, it's. I'm presently on the bank board here at Merchants and and a lot of. The reason they got me on here is, you know, a lot of guys were putting in parlors, stuff like that with computer, computers in it. They didn't enough about it as far as. There are some computers or robot operations in the colony which are working pretty well.
You know.
But you still gotta. Be there.
And. Oh, Doug Hines.
Yeah.
He put one in. I took the Solbeck boys there one day. The first question they asked me, could it be twice as big? And they put one in. They spent about three million.
Yeah.
But they just love it.
Yeah, it's. It's still a lot of management. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
You get, from what I understand, you know, your phone can cut out the robots or whatever. If something breaks down, they'll call your phone. Or you'll know to be notified something's wrong.
But this is about the mineral storage and extension and stuff, so that's.
Presently, you know, when we can haul, say if it gets real cold or rainy weather, we got a flat storage out in front of our freestyle barn where we can store two, three days, you know, without getting out there. But it's tough, you know, in the springtime when you shouldn't be out there. I mean, it's. You gotta be.
All all the runoff from the open lots will go into the pit?
Yeah, that's, I know that's in the plant. We. They built some of the stuff already. We have a drainage thing that would be going around or under the pit. All they they do, you know, for bypass to pit, some of the water will be going.
Um, scraping into the pit rather than pumping into the pit or.
It's great.
It's great. Any other questions?
You got a lot more ambition than I do.
Well, what do you do? I mean, it's, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I mean, it's, I guess I've done it all my life. Sooner or later, you gotta hand it over. So.
Well, improve your operation if you have something.
Yeah, you know, even if we, I guess, way we look at it too, you know, if we don't milk cows someday, or they decide they don't wanna milk cows, I can still raise heifers for somebody, and it's always somebody looking for heifers. And you can't utilize your facilities, you know, if somebody wants to come in here, if they don't have a pit for one, you know. That's right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions?
I guess for the couple that are new, so when proposals come in for certain things on the feedlot side, um, it'd be uh, it kind of expansions over three hundred animal units. So uh, it could be a barn or like nurse or or anything. There's two different components up to that. Um, our ordinance, like we just covered, or like we just stated here, does require that they seek a conditional use permit for it. But then there's also a feedlot permit, and that's actually uh, an N P C A permit that the county, if somebody, if the county has somebody on staff, which we do, that is my job here, um, then we review that all in-house. And so that's, it's kind of referenced in here, but just so you're aware of that. So that includes, um, in this situation, we include the disaster plan and design and all the specs on the liquid mineral storage. Um, but then it also includes a a review of their mineral management plan. So uh, it's pretty extensive. I mean, what's your plan? Six hundred pages? They're they're, and they cover conservation practices and everything with the equip program. So there's quite a uh, a review process that goes along with this. And so we are not totally done with that yet. Like you said, his final plans just came in today and waiting on some mineral management plan updates. And so those are still in in process, but I thought we have enough information to move forward with the conditional use.
I guess one comment on the mineral management, if you're not familiar with that. What is it? Three years? They want at least three years?
Three years. Yeah, I think that's.
Where you spread your mineral, how much you spread there, cuz phosphorus levels. Remember, they don't want too high a phosphorus level on your land. You know, you're getting put too much on it, is what they're saying. So I mean, we have enough, you have to have enough acres to support that.
You do you do all enough acres here?
Well, granted.
Whatever, let me plan it.
Right.
Think that. If you're comfortable there, you can stay there. You can go back. Just stay there if you want to.
Okay.
I think that's kind of the questions we need to use. And if you're well managed, you probably got this.
No, the uh, comment they had was from the highway engineer. He said that. I don't think that this side has, there hasn't been issues here and he has no problem with it.
I guess, you know, as far as the neighbors, they were all notified. They didn't see, I guess, like, well, Wayne Nordex, my neighbor, but he said he wished he had one that big. I mean, you know, he he grew and wasn't able to expand, but maybe he was.
You won't regret it. That's fair.
Well. It saves a lot of time, you know, and stuff like, like I said, you know, starting equipment up in the winter time is rough on and and stuff like that. You get better rewards from your nutrients and stuff as far as fertilizer, fertilizer.
So you sound sound like you're thinking about custom law and having.
Well, that would be. You know, the plan right now, we'd probably haul some ourselves to hear help with it. Yeah.
Just busy times when you learn at the end of the summer.
And the time of the year is to put it on in the fall and springtime, you know, your ground is soft. And from what I've heard, you know, whether we use a drag line, if you're familiar with a tractor that's hooked up to a drag line and get the liquid soil. They don't like doing that in the springtime cuz a lot of time it pulls the soil with it. You know, when you're pulling it.
Johnson's only hair does that, you know.
And if you're in the fall, your ground is more firm.
Any other questions before, especially before we go to the finals? Like, so the findings, you like?
Yep.
Hating findings, eight, nine, thirteen, fourteen. All is in favor, but we will stop. Findings from. Process say.
All right.
Give me a second.
Hold on a second. What you said.
Right. The number one, that the proposed use conforms to the Houston County Land Use Plan. Now, the 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 comprehensive plan prioritizes supportive commercial agriculture. For instance, part one hundred point zero five zero one recognizes the first goal is to preserve commercial agriculture as an essential long-term permanent land use in the county. For dairy operations to remain viable, it oftentimes requires expansion. And along with that, mineral basin allows them to respond.
Those favor number one, say that.
All right.
Two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. That analysis states that the petitioners currently operate a daily scrape and haul operation in mineral storage will allow them to limit land application of mineral to the fall as well as the opportunity to be more selective in respect to appropriate weather conditions for land application.
All those favor bad analysis, say that.
All right.
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Analysis states that this project is ultimately to help protect water quality by providing the producer with the ability to handle mineral only when conditions are appropriate.
All those favor number three, say that.
All right.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis states all water that falls within the mineral basin will be contained in clean water diversions will ensure stormwater is directed around the new product project. Water controls exist in the open lot area and won't be affected by this construction.
All those favor number four, say that.
All right.
Five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Analysis states that feedlot permits require soils to meet specific standards for approval as well as minimum bedrock separation requirements.
All those favor of the state analysis, five, say that.
All right.
Si- oh, six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis states that a complete review of the equipment or storage basin, design and plans will be completed along with the mineral management plan review before the feedlot permit is granted. This is to ensure that the project will meet specifications in place to minimize any pollution concerns.
All those favor status of six, say that.
All right.
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis states that this is an existing dairy facility, so the necessary public infrastructure and utilities are present at this location. Any rerouting within the side of utilities, access roads, drainage, et cetera, as part of this project will be the responsibility of the producer.
All those favorable analysis, so say that.
All right.
Eight and nine, we are skipping, so ten. But the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that mineral storage is commonly found in agricultural district and proper management will reduce any adverse effect to neighboring properties. This area consists of farming operations with farm dwellings, and the ordinance clearly states that neighboring properties in this district may be subjected to inconveniences, including odor from normal and accepted agricultural practices.
All those favor of the analysis.
All right.
Eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of. Analysis states that the predominant use in this area is agricultural. There is another large dairy facility south of this farm, but the addition of a basin and dislocation will not impacting impact neighboring agricultural operation.
Your analysis, say that.
All right.
Well, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control events of odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibration so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. Under control, light effects and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that mineral handling does create orders, but the addition of the basin is an improvement, so they will not be hauling daily. Their good neighbor notice identifies that they will try to haul when wind is not an issue and will hire a custom applicator to inject the liquid.
I need to step policies. All say that.
All right.
The thirteen and fourteen are not applicable. Fifteen, that said, specific conditions with such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. Analysis states that this project aims to reduce mineral runoff potential, eliminate groundwater pollution hazards, improve soil health and therefore protect the public's health, safety and morals and general welfare.
Fifteen, say that.
All right.
Someone might make a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the findings presented.
Second, I motion.
I'll second it.
Of course, I seconded. Please, we want to think it was a fair statement.
All right.
So do you wanna move to recommendations?
So, um, staff is proposing, I do have one, one change, but staff is proposing that you recommend to the Houston County Board that approve the conditional use application for expansion of a feedlot to four hundred and sixty-one point five animal units and and to include mineral storage over twenty thousand gallons with the following conditions. One, that the permittee shall comply with all federal, state and local laws and regulations. Two, that the permittee shall obtain all permits and approvals required under Minnesota animal feedlot rules prior to commencing work on the mineral pit. And three, that the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times in any reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statute rules as ordered. So.
So. Are you motion acceptable also? And you second?
I'll second.
This was a favor that say.
All right.
Any opposed questions? You know, we probably get two motion next. I may be watching to recommend and grant. Second to that.
I'll second it.
All those. That's that's.
Greg Myrie. Cindy Wright.
Yes.
Wayne Feldmeyer.
Yes.
Ed Hamel.
Yes.
Jim Weiser.
Yes.
Larry Hasner.
Yes.
And Josh Grant. So our favorite and melting carries, um, Will Smith has done it, I guess, with the Brad. Uh, these guys make made a recommendation of what is the Board of Commissioners' final approval, and that'll be on. I don't, you probably don't have to be there.
Spot there. Contractors and so. Or you've got to wait.
Um. I mean.
Think you could do it like an.
Yeah.
That's a good, good approval, which.
Okay, then.
Do an initial thing to kind of.
Two, African sex.
Officially, that's a. Six.
Yeah.
I'm not, yeah, and I'm not sure what the stipulations are with the equip program. If they need final approvals on everything or.
Well, way it sounded, whoever I want to go with. Some guys are better, others.
Yeah, that's gonna be one big bit.
Yeah, well, I I didn't really want it that big, but you know, more or less, that's what they say.
Yeah.
I mean, they want it. Big. I guess. You build a shed a lot of time. You wish you would have made it bigger.
Yep, you always do.
Well, yes. Been proposed that.
No, one question, you said, Steve, what? Do you have any? What is the next?
We don't have another one. Um, it would fall under the states, which is one thousand.
Do they ever give us a thousand?
Yeah, and get a state.
Then there's some what, over by a hundred two?
Uh, that has to do with how it's permitted in in a public notice and some. If you're expanding by over five hundred animal units, there might be an E A W, depending on sensitive features.
Well, I don't.
Yeah.
Change that language a bit. Did you say four hundred two, two four hundred?
Yes, instead of the over three hundred animal units, I um, forgot that we've been putting actually a cap in the language, so I changed that to four hundred and fifty-one point five. Which is what we identified on the speed.
That can vary from day to day, sell some of our boards. I think that's what we presently had or something.
That's all your maximum is kind of.
Right.
Yeah, I think you had some extra in there.
Good luck, Jan.
Good luck.
Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Thank you much.
So I guess we could, I'll recommend, I make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Watching the.
I'll second it.
All of the favor of the last one.
All right.
It's unfortunate. Oh, they go.
That again, I need to interrupt before I just thought if he's waiting here, we can give him in. If you had questions on. Or we talk about how the feedlot variance.
That was.
Or the feedlot.
This side, I don't remember what you. I just, no, that was good to point that out because over three hundred, that's really.
Oh, yeah.
But it's not. I know you have some stipulations, but to say two, um, four hundred and sixty point five, whatever point five of a animal that is.
Size or.
Yeah.
Either half.
Okay.
Yeah, so like a dairy cow is actually one point four.
Oh, okay.
Oh, is that, uh, a deal went on a county going where they wanted up on top of the ridge up there?
The Dye Dancer?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything recently. Um. All I know about it is that the township approves it, but they actually didn't have the authority to do to do that until all the other permits were settled.
Yeah.
And I don't know that they, I don't know if they've even made an application.
They're gonna have to improve all their roads up there. Cuz if they're gonna bring that much weight on them roads, they're gonna have to, the roads gotta be totally. Where is that? Uh, but.
Uh, Wilson.
Wilson, yeah. They got a digest, so they were trying to, they were trying to get it approved. About a month ago.
And I think there were stables in the area, which is kind of the state's main concern. And so, or like regularly we were proposing it.
Yeah.
And so they were kind of putting the cart before the horse for my understanding of it. Um, so if. Um, so it breaks down the methane, yeah, and I'm not sure the company that you.
Well, they're.
It's contracting, but they'll use it for energy.
See, this guy here looks right next to Odak and they would have the potential to do the same thing. Especially with that big bit. You know.
My experience, I'd add a little bit.
Well, they gotta be.
And they haven't proved it too, I toured a couple of months on the E D A for a while.
There was a couple of big ones that they asked. Really big. Theory, they look great.
Yeah, that's right, we did, I remember that. Yep.
My neighbor did. Run bankrupt, trying to do it too.
Yeah.
I guess it's pretty high.
Can I actually construct it?
They had parts of it built, but it's never, it never had that.
Companies don't always wanna buy your power. That can be a bit of a key, just don't say, hey, I wanna spin either back. That's.
I think that one over in uh St. Louis, we toured. They were just paying like two point five cents a kilowatt hour. Yeah, it's it's okay. It's definitely gonna be part of the future.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Everything improves in technology, it's quite common in Europe.
If you wanna see when you gotta go down.
Let's take a tour down there.
So does anybody have anything to say about the presentation last month at the. Plan and stuff that they gave or just read it and all that stuff.
I've read part of it.
Any any thoughts about it or anything? See, I guess I was a little confused, I was thinking that was gonna be kind of, you know, steps over. New new orders and stuff, and it's basically just like vicious.
Yeah.
What we want to do. Everything that gets changed is still have to go through the period process.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that there's still up to do whatever it takes to make a few changes.
What do you guys all think here on this board, me? You think we should? Get housing? More housing in in the area or? What do you think?
You mean for growth?
Yeah, per group.
I had one person comment to me that he heard it was going through that we're gonna. Have more housing. Allow. And I said, that's true, I mean, it's been discussed, but. It'd be more more rather than.
Dancing.
Right.
Yeah.
I think I asked this question last month. I asked it, but if if it was in two miles of the city, they were gonna allow more housing. And and I looked it up, I couldn't find it.
Okay, okay, but. Whatever we're running into with the crest. Is the presence. That is identified two miles. As their area of interest.
Oh, that is.
From the city, means you know, potentially, so where that gets interesting. Is that you get into the situation with the comp plan that talks about preserving prime egg. And then it says, well. If a city. In the area. Says they have an interest in that same area, they can potentially. Trump.
They can.
That's that's kind of how it's written, I mean, I'm real paraphrasing. So there there's some verbiage in there where that gets very, very interesting. Then and then it's that, yeah. What if they don't come to pull this? So what they.
Okay, this is a scenario I think we're doing. Cause I know people that are buying land right outside of Houston, figuring they got this two mile limit. And they wanna be able to put denser housing than two miles of Houston. I mean.
With the, with the city and potentially annex with them?
I don't know, I you see, but if if you look and see how these, when Houston, you know, annexed that part. Right out west of Houston. Everybody went broke on that. And I've talked to more people that went broke on that. Well, you know, Hoskins and Moon bought it and they couldn't afford to put the infrastructure. You know, that's what everybody's running into on this. Is there any way we can address this? So that if the cities expand. The infrastructure will be there.
We certainly have, in the comp plan, there's there's vision statements to talk. Indicating for development. In existing areas.
Yeah.
I mean, but that's, so it isn't going as far as the city. You know, we shall indicate for funding for.
Yeah.
This. They're usually a little more chipped.
Who is this in the township area too, Wayne, or is this also?
No, it's all, it's in the all intelligent area. And then the other thing. If you feel like these housing deals where you have one septic system. Um they've got, uh, I'm trying to think of the name, but right outside of Houston going toward Winona. What is that called? Uh Cassandau. Okay, if you go up in Cassandau, it's a mess. But here's what the plow operators say, they can't turn their plow around in any of those circles there. So if we're gonna design something, we've gotta put something in there. So that if people are gonna get plowed out, that they can do it. You know, if they don't do it with their own equipment, they gotta, you know, they can't afford, the cities can't afford. You you. They're more stopper law operators.
Boca Township ran the same thing with Brooklyn Hills.
Yep.
It's like, it wasn't planned correctly and it was given to the township. And the township had to deal with it. So.
How did they handle it?
Oh, yes, that's true, the townships actually don't have to take that on, we do have one that was kind of being looked at. That the township refused, they they didn't feel that they were gonna have the resources to handle it and it was a pretty much. Um, so, yeah, we've been hearing that a lot, the townships are kind of.
Anything we can put in in the regulation that would help the townships out for that?
That's gonna work.
Well, starts with design, I mean, that's something that the developer. I guess the townships have, they're gonna have to sign off on it, um surveyor engineers, help people sign off on it, so. Um we just have to make sure that the design is actually something.
There's there's one thing in this comp plan that I would like to see. You you let these people put these houses up on hills, there isn't place for a fire truck or ambulance or anything. And I'd like to see that changed, because you know what, when somebody's dying and you can't get any ambulance up there or something up there. They're gonna blame us in future. You know.
Some of that's already addressed, just with that total, it's that slope requirement. That's problem.
But there are, there are some that are free there.
Yeah, there, I mean, I worked over for the hospital over there for years. And you go to these doctors' places up there inside of the hill, they're just ridiculous, you gotta drive a truck in and back it out. You know, and they don't care. They're supposed to worry about lives, they don't worry about anything like that.
I guess I might see it a little differently, like if I wanna spend the money and build a mansion on top of the hill so I have a nice view. And my house burnt stuff, I made that choice, that's my problem, that's what we don't do.
Well, when they'll actually have it. Basically said.
The landslide.
Did you let them build the road service?
I think Utah, Idaho, there's there's a number of states.
That's something we should really address.
I know, kinda like, that's their responsibility, they they built in the the.
Their ownership, you know, services that. Don't drag on this road after.
And purchasing. Yeah, purchasing a lot, you know, they have to know that, that there's no uh emergency vehicles that can get up there.
I think that insurance.
Right.
I couldn't get insurance with the.
You guys might know this, I never noticed this, now I'm driving, a couple years ago. The big corner. Miller's Corner, what happened to the house above Miller's?
Never got finished.
Minna's the expert.
Yeah, Minna's been trying to sell that, but they also want brand road access or driveway access. Um. I guess that's a kind of a complicated story, they just never finished it, but but where we're at now is. Top is that, um no one's ever lived in it, so technically we don't view it as a dwelling at this point. And so people were coming and asking us, but I think Minna has the price way down, trying to get rid of it.
Minna did say. They made it very clear.
Yeah, cause they gotta expand in that road.
So it's a helicopter accident.
So, yeah, our stand was pretty much.
You know, so so is the neighbor just getting mouth. I get it.
The guy that owns the rock where he's pretty much got the handle on that. Yeah, he's gonna, he can have an access to his. So he's just sitting tight, he's probably trying to buy it.
Where where is it off the tap bill?
You see those?
Well, they condemned one of them, oh, it belonged there, didn't they?
That that's the one.
Um that's kind of a, there should be something we could find there to get that.
You're gonna run into a lot more problems down the road this. You can go up on U B ten. They put. I think it's a camper. Shed up on the neighbor's property. Nobody ever said anything. But nobody ever lived in it? They didn't buy the land or nothing, they just built. One in U B ten where the house that was right. They write through part of it's Houston, part of it's. That's the way U B ten is.
Yeah, we experienced it on a road.
Yeah.
Maybe you have, in children, you have. Mine moved right along with the barn, right next to the barn.
Oh, yeah. It's in U B ten, right across from the town hall. The corner marker is inside the building, all over there, I mean, it's totally nuts. Half of that's in McCresson Township, half in the military. Yeah, like middle of the hall, also.
Which one is that? Yep.
Yeah.
After they got married, is that one? Yeah, that's the. Remember that, they had a whole piece of the paper about this poor couple, they got robbed right into the. Although they did, they wrapped themselves, turned insurance.